This is Commissioner's item number 11. This is on the public hearing agenda. This is 8-10 West 17th Street located within the Ladies Mile Historic District. Document number 163857, Manhattan Block 818, Lot 57. This is an application for certificate of appropriateness. This is a mid 20th century commercial style office and warehouse building designed by Belfato and Pavarini and built in 1961-63. The application is to demolish the building and construct a new building.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Emma Waterloo Preservation Staff. The item for use for 8 through 10 West 17th Street in the Ladies Mile Historic District. The building is located on the south side of the street between Fifth and Sixth Avenues. This is the building which the designation report describes as mid 20th century commercial style and was built in 1961 through 63 and designed by Belfato and Pavarini. The proposal is to demolish this building and construct a new building. The project applicant is here to further explain the proposal and answer your questions.
Thank you, Emma.
Thanks, Emma. Good afternoon Commissioners, I'm Richard Southlick, Fire, Labor, and Food, and we're going to have two-part presentations, Emma mentioned. First, we need to look at the demolition of existing three-story structure on site, and then we want to look at the proposal for a new 16-story residential building in this district. And... Let's start with that first. The building's located on the very southern portion of the Ladies Mile Historic District. It's in a contextual C648 district proposing an azurite building on the site. And as you can see, it's a small three-story, more contemporary building nestled within a whole series of 12, 14, 16-story buildings. It's on the south side of 17th Street. Before we get into the main part of the presentation, I would like Bruce Wilkinson from Catholic Medical Missions to just say a word or two. He's been the owner of this property since it was built, 1962. Don't go away, we're talking very briefly.
Good afternoon, my name's Bruce Wilkinson. I'm the CEO and President of Catholic Medical Mission Board. We're a 102-year-old organization that has been operating actually out of this site since 1930. And this building no longer, the functionality doesn't serve our purpose, and we'd like to repurpose the assets tied up into this for our global health work. We're a global health organization responding all over the world. Currently, we're working especially on malaria, HIV work, and especially on Ebola currently, as you're well aware. So the reason we're actually moving forward with the sale of this building is so that these proceeds can be used for women and children's health, which is our focus. Globally, we work in 65 countries around the world and have been doing that for 102 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kate McHale, Fire, Labor, and Food, and I want to take you through our assessment of the existing building on the site, which we have studied at length, and we've really determined that it is neither characteristic of the architectural and history of the historic district for which it was designated, nor is it representative or significant as 60s architecture when it was constructed. And just to take you through the analysis of the historic district, there are many, there are a few significant waves of development that characterize the architecture of the district. This building doesn't fit into any of those waves, but we wanted to walk you through to explain that. The first wave is the early, the mid 19th century's residential construction that really filled the streetscapes of the district mostly with brownstone buildings about four stories. A lot of these buildings still remain. Many of them have altered ground floors, but they really create a character and a context in this district. These two buildings here were the original 8 to 10 West 17th Street. They were replaced by the existing building in 1962. And it's interesting to note in the designation report, actually, more time is spent describing these buildings and their history than the building that replaced them. I think part of that is because William Cullen Bryant lived in one of them. The next wave of development really starts to bring the character of Ladies Mile and the carriage trade to the district. And so we start to see the construction of impressive retail stores on the corners of the avenues with Arnold Constable, dry goods stores, department stores. And with them really starts to come also the manufacturing and the trade. And so we really start to see the transformation of this district during this time. So we're getting now into the late 19th century. We are seeing even larger retail stores with Siegel and Cooper. We're seeing larger corner stores, office buildings constructed on the avenues. Just before the turn of the century, there was a law passed to improve workplace conditions, and this really led to quite a lot of new construction, mostly in the mid-blocks of the tall store and loft buildings that really are the primary building type in the district. And this building phase really transformed the character of the district with these very tall street wall buildings rising straight up to an overhanging cornice, 10 to 12 stories, large windows to bring natural light deep into manufacturing floors. After 1916, we have the zoning resolution, which then requires the sky exposure planning. This type of construction is no longer allowed, and so the development in the district really, really stops at that time. And so after that, we start to see more renovations of existing buildings, but we don't really see much more new construction. And in fact, in the designation report, there's really no more waves of development that are described after that time. And we did some mapping, which unfortunately translates poorly through the projector, but the muddiness of the colors aside, what you really start to see is primarily the district is full of buildings that were constructed pre-1915, and that's what we're seeing here. The buildings that have this angle shows a later renovation of an earlier building. And that's another kind of important characteristic of the district is this layering of new uses, new facades, but keeping traces of the older buildings. So when we remove buildings that were not constructed before 1960 in the district, this is what we see in this large swath between Fifth and Sixth Avenue. And primarily, those buildings are these renovations of earlier buildings, so keeping that kind of layering of the history. This is the building site here that we're working with. It's actually the only building after 1960 that's not a refacing of a facade that was given a style in the designation report, so it's a bit of an anomaly.
So, I'm sorry, so after 1916, these are the buildings that were developed or modified?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, in this area of the district.
Okay.
Yeah, and like other historic districts where you do see later waves of modern buildings that kind of join the context, we don't really see that here. And so the building, as was described, was given the style of mid 20th century commercial, which of course describes more a use than a style. But these buildings typically, the other buildings given that style, were again these facade conversions of earlier buildings. So you're keeping those traces of the earlier waves of development and that kind of layering of the history of the district. This one, built in 1963, is the most recent construction in the style category. There is another new building that was built in the late 1940s, but I think relates a bit more to the existing mid-block context with its larger windows. We were interested that the commission did not give it the style of modern, but we did look at the other modern buildings in the district for comparison. And again, these tend to be refacing of earlier buildings. And then we have this one from 1975, and this is an industrial modern from 1929. So it doesn't really fit into that category either. Nor is it really part of the characteristic building types called out in the historic district designation report or the architectural styles. So we see these typically relate to the carriage trade and its related industries. Interestingly, at some of the corners of the designation report are some modern buildings that the existing building might relate a little more to. These, of course, were drawn out of the district as not having that historic and architectural character. It was designated to protect what ours happens to be in the mid-block. So having analyzed the building in terms of its relationship to the historic district, we wanted to look at it on its own merits as 1960s architecture and as a work of its architects, Belfato and Pavarini. And so this slide compares the building to others by Belfato and Pavarini, who were active in the 60s and did do a lot of work for the Catholic Church. But we find that among their other work, which tends to get more sculptural and really pushing the limits and forms with material, that this is rather more mundane and probably was built on a budget for a simple use. And maybe a better, more fully resolution of this vertical articulation was done a block to the south of the Xavier High School. And this building, to us, does not represent 1960s architecture pushing innovation forward. It actually reads a little more like a 30s building. And so then looking at mid-century 60s architecture, we compared the building to others that are listed on the DOCOMOMO U.S. Register. And this building is not listed on that register, but these are, and they are also within New York City Historic Districts or are New York City individual landmarks. And again, there's really kind of a difference and a contrast in the amount of sort of innovation of material and form and moving architecture forward in the 60s that was happening with these other buildings that we don't see here. And then we also looked just in terms of precedence of other mid-century and other buildings that have been approved for demolition in historic districts, and we do find examples in Chelsea with the former Cheryl Hall on Ninth Avenue, the Congregation Sheriff Israel on 70th Street in the Upper West Side, and then more recently in TriBecca and in the Upper West Side and in Greenwich Village. So I'm going to turn it over now back to Richard Southlick to take you through the proposed new design.
Thanks, Kate. So what are we proposing to replace this building? These two images are on the top, the existing streetscape, south side of 17th Street from Fifth Avenue over to Sixth Avenue, and then our proposed building, this is the building site here, and we're looking at adding a contextual building that sets within and really completes that part of the street wall. There's a 12-story building directly to the west and a 18-story building to the east, and we're matching the height of the 12-story building, the lower building to the west. To inform our design, we started looking at architectural characteristics of the district. And there are really four or five things that really stood out. One, the tripartite organization of these late 19th or early 20th century buildings. The amount of light, very large clusters of windows, these are manufacturing lofts. They needed large windows for light penetration, natural light into the spaces. There's a very strong vertical articulation. There's a frame that ties the three parts of the building together with a very pronounced base and an articulated capital. So we've looked at those characteristics to help inform the design, not to drive our design, but actually to inform it. And we'll look at that step by step, but one word I want to say about the design is that in the detailing, the materials, really in how the architecture, the architectonic sense of this, it's quite contemporary, but in the dermassing proportions, the alignments, that's where we try to be much more sympathetic to its neighbors. This is a view of the base. A lot of the bases are out of two and three stories. This is limestone showing the streetscape, but showing also how it's very cleanly cut, fairly unadored as a contemporary expression with square windows on the third floor and then looking at a double-story height to give a little more presence on the street. This is the elevation of 17th Street, again, trying to align the bases, which are all a little bit larger, a double-story capital for the building, a strong shaft with the verticality, and then horizontal counterpoints or horizontal spandrels which tie that together. You'll see that in many of the buildings on this particular block. Above the 14th floor, which lines up with the 12-story adjacent building, there's a two-story setback, and above that, a mechanical room and some screened-in mechanical spaces. I want to talk a little bit about the site, because the site is a little unusual. This is a shallow block. It's 92 feet, not 100 feet deep. It's also, in this part of Ladies Mile, the zoning requires not only a front setback 15 feet at 150 feet, but also a setback on the rear yard of 10 feet. So with that, plus the 30-foot rear yard, the penthouse is actually set back by the ways, and it's really quite small. Each floor of the penthouse is slightly more than 1,000 square feet, therefore, kind of 2,500 square foot penthouse. And then the mechanicals, which are up against the much taller 18-story building to the east, which we thought was a lot more appropriate and made it much less visible. So it really gives you this staggered type of detail. There is a rear facade, really like lots of rear facades, much more plain and much more plain art. Typically, the backs of buildings like this would be plain brick. We're using a pale-colored brick with punched openings and then a series of balconies from the third floor up. And that takes advantage of a view over a series of landmark buildings which are on 16th Street. I'll show you that in a few minutes. Got to go through a series of detailed blowups. This is the base, and I just want to point out some of the materials. We're looking at, in the base, a limestone base which is on a very dense sandstone plate. So that would be from here down. The windows, the entrances, even this articulated, this is a striated or full-depth spandrel. It's painted aluminum. And then from the base up, third floor up, is then a terracotta which complements the limestone of the base. It's a terracotta rain screen with painted aluminum channels which act as string courses, separating each of the floors. So the back of the building is a brick that works with a terracotta, and that actually is the secondary material once we get above the cornice. Working up through the building, you can see the 15-foot setback at the cornice line at 150 feet. There's a more contemporary type of cornice, which is aluminum, painted, the terracotta rain screen, and then the brick starts setback. And then a typical section in the shaft of the building, rain screen, aluminum string courses, and then the dark painted aluminum spandrels and windows. This is what it looks like through. Actually, one thing I really want to point out here is we picked up typical detailing of a cornice and really reduced that to a more contemporary expression. You can see the string courses and a water force as well all over. You went through the district and started looking at bases to help inform what the materials should be. Again, lots of limestone, granite, or other stone bases that is very similar to what I just shown you. Looking at the windows, which are clustered, again, you've allowed lots of natural light into the buildings. You get either Chicago-style or clusters of three or four windows in the center with a strong vertical expression on the side. Again, if you look at the render on the right-hand side, very similar in our expression. Here's the site plan. Our building is located 45 feet wide, 92 feet deep. There are individual designated landmarks right opposite. This is Center for Jewish History, and then a few others. So we've, these are all four and five-story buildings. We want to take advantage of the view, so we have balconies on the backside, which take advantage of the view across. This shows how small the penthouse really is with the 15-foot setback, the mechanical space, and the penthouse really is about 37-foot depth. We have the 30-foot setback and then another 10-foot setback at 150 feet. In section, just looking at the uses, these are all individual floor-through apartments, 15 apartments throughout. The duplex penthouse, mechanical space that has the mechanical equipment, then a screened-in cooling tower and emergency generator at the very top part of this. You can start to see the sightlines, which are at the 90-degree, where from 17th Street, none of that's visible. From 16th Street, you do see the upper portions. And if you look at a site plan, you can see the detail in this, but it's all in your book. The building is not visible from 17th Street. It's slightly visible for about one step, for about 5 feet on Fifth Avenue, which is a very small glimpse. And then you do get glimpses of a framed view of 16th Street. These are existing and proposed. That is what you see from Fifth Avenue from that one small sliver. Again, nothing else on 17th Street. This is looking east from 17th Street. The building is here, so it's not visible. I just want to show just how plain the facade elevation of the neighborhood building is, and we've used that really as kind of the guidance for all the secondary facades, really This is from 16th Street. The existing on the left, and the proposed on the right. You do see a portion of it on the right-hand side, but it's that very variegated framed view of water towers, fire escapes. And this facade is actually 132 feet back in the street because of all the setbacks and the shallow depth of the overall lot. Here again, before, and you do see this. I want to point out just the mechanicals are tucked up against the blank wall of the existing commercial building on Fifth Avenue. So that really cuts back on the view from the skies. Lastly, we just looked at a few other penthouses that have been approved in the district. One on First Street, one on 18th Street. Plans, unless I need to go through those.
I think that's fine.
Well, residential, no retail, and quality house.
Okay. All right. Questions for the applicant?
I have a question. What is, you may have mentioned it, what is the material of the existing building facade?
Brick.
It is brick. And is it covered with, I just wasn't clear enough detail. Is it covered with a stucco?
This is the existing building, these are actually the two penthouses.
That were once there. I'm saying, the existing building is brick, and you can read the brick, or brick is covered over with, sorry, because the image is done.
We have, so let me bring it much closer. It's brick. It's got a vertical pier, and this is setback a few inches.
And both the setback and the forward are brick? We see the brick coursing?
Yeah, it's all brick. It's brick, it's concrete, parging down below, and then, remember, this was an old distribution, it was a warehouse building. Mr. Wilkinson didn't really talk about, but their mission was to take medical supplies and clothing, house it here, then distribute it around the world. So these are loading docks. It was really a very utilitarian building at the time, and there's a little bit of office space upstairs. It's all brick.
Yes, Roberta?
What is it that's jetting out at the very top on the right, on your photograph, not this, but was that, was that the elevator bulkhead, was that?
Oh, in the section?
Yes.
Wait, in the existing?
No, on the new drawing, I mean, on the new elevation.
Oh, at the rear?
Yes, and what was that? And was there a way to place this?
Yeah, let's go back. Technical support, this is our IT. Where the, I'm sorry, Steve.
I was just asking, what was that? And I was asking.
Oh, it's a screen. Yeah, there is the boiler and some air handling, I'm sorry, the boiler and some air conditioning equipment is in a mechanical floor that's directly above the penthouse. Then screened in is the emergency generator and cooling tower.
Yeah, so go to the elevation when you see it from that, the photograph, the montage where we put them.
Oh, right.
The montage, from the rear.
Right. Thanks, Steve. A couple more.
Yeah, 39, yeah.
Is that another one as well?
Yeah, this is the boiler mechanical space. This actually is the top floor of the penthouse. You don't see the lower floor of the penthouse. This is the 14th floor. That's actually a setback right at that point, and that's a screen which would have the cooling tower.
So there was no way to put that at the same level or at a lower level?
Yeah, let me do a quick explanation of the more technical part of the zoning code. You're allowed only 20% of the lot coverage, lot coverage is 70%, then 20% of that for any mechanical equipment that's above 180 feet. And that way, it's tall and narrow rather than spread out. First of all, it's a very small footprint, 45 feet, not 50 or more, 92 feet, not 100 feet. And once you go above 185, you're only limited to 20% of the set, my mouth's right at 70%. So we've had to stack the two open-air mechanical pieces of equipment within a open shell. This doesn't show the shell, the screen itself, that would be a screen.
It doesn't show what?
So this would be a screen. This is open air. As for cooling tower, we need air and also for generators, it's exposed to that side. Yeah, again, maybe more important, why can we go back? Yeah, this is the 20% maximum of the 70%, 70% of that. This is your 30-foot setback. In this district, which is really interesting, Ladies Mile Historic District actually requires a rear setback at 150 feet. So the rear setback occurs here, that's another 10 feet. You have a 15-foot setback here, 150. So you're only limited to this 37-foot slot, so that equates way up. And we think with it going up against this much, much taller building, it really, any view, you don't see it from 17th Street to be very acknowledged that. The only view you really see is across this way, and if you didn't see this, you'd see the side of this building anyway.
Where do you see it from? So you're saying you see it from where?
Sorry.
From 16th, from east, from 16th Street.
Yeah, the point is, if you look at this one, this line here would be, if you took the screen out, which has the emergency generator and cooling tower, you would get this line of the existing buildings which would block the sky. So it's basically always shielded by the building behind it. So we're not, we're really not screening out anymore of the sky. And as you know, we always take the worst possible angle. So as you walk further west on the block, the frame of the buildings on your side, because this is a setback much more than the two adjoining buildings. Joining buildings go back almost the full 92 feet of the lot. This has to be set back 30 feet and then another 10 feet. So it's really tucked into this pocket, and those buildings block the view other than when you're almost directly across them. So in this worst case, it's a limited view of politically across the building.
All right. Are there other questions? Okay, why don't we take testimony? May call you back. Okay. Kelly Carroll?
Kelly Carroll, Historic District Council. Unlike recent demolition applications like 807 Park, HDC finds it acceptable to replace this building with another building. The committee was swayed to consider replacing this building because of the photographic essay submitted as part of this application. 8 to 10 West 17th Street appeared in pallor compared with examples provided of the fanciful Ladies Mile quality buildings in the of the fanciful Ladies Mile quality buildings in the district. Further, it has demonstrated that this building is not a colleague among the urbane modern buildings completed by architects Balfatto and Pavarini. With an array of exquisite architecture researched as part of the proposal, HDC agreed that the current design for the new building left something to be desired. The committee suggests looking to the examples that were provided, determining what made them successful works of architecture, and drawing inspiration to create a more refined design for this new building. Thank you.
Thank you. Payman Lothi?
My name is Payman Lothi, Vice President of Urban Planning for the Real Estate Board of New York. On behalf of our sixteen thousand members, we support the proposed plan by Sherwood Equities and Arum Batia Development to redevelop the site of an existing three-story building in the Ladies Mile Historic District, and believe that their application for a certificate of appropriate interest merits approval from the commission. The planned development proposes demolishing a three-story mid-twentieth century commercial style building and replacing with an as of right fourteen-story building with a setback two-story penthouse that more delicately blends into the fabric of the existing tall store and loft buildings on the mid-block. As stated in the designation report for the historic district, this particular block of Ladies Mile is primarily comprised of tall store and loft buildings in the neo-Renascence and Bauhaus style of architecture. The existing three-story building was constructed in nineteen sixty-three and does not contribute in any way to the district, either through its architecture or through its history. Further, the existing building breaks up the common building line on the block that is highlighted in the designation report. The proposed building will reinforce this common building line through a painted aluminum cornice at the fourteenth story, and its overall design will more closely match the architecture from the development of late nineteenth and early twentieth century. The design's three-story limestone base and upper floors clad in a terracotta rainscreen recall historic materials used in the district and similar LPC-approved constructions of residential buildings in the district. This project not only represents an opportunity for a worthy nonprofit to generate much needed revenue, but also to improve the built character of the Ladies Mile Historic District. The proposed building is beautifully designed and goes to great lengths to respect the character of the district and enhances the character of the block. We urge the commission to approve the application for a certificate of appropriate master, the aforementioned proposal.
Thank you. Bert Neuborn?
Thank you. My name is Bert Neuborn. I've been a resident of twelve West Seventeenth Street, which is the building abutting of the proposed construction since nineteen ninety-four. I've served as president of the co-op and as vice president. It's an eleven-family co-op. Let me say just a word in defense of the beleaguered building at eight to ten. The story you've heard is that it is somehow a, an extraordinarily ugly creature of the nineteen sixties with no architectural distinction, whatever. Now, it was built by the leading church architect of the period, and the echo of this building, you can't see it from the pictures that the developer has suggested, has shown you, but the building has texture. The texture is a series of slits that echo Crusader forts in both Accra and Jerusalem. I don't know the history of the architect here, but I'll bet that he studied there and as a Catholic architect, was echoing the window slits, the archers used in those buildings. And I remember walking home, time after time, past that building, looking at those windows, smiling, thinking of the Crusader forts in Accra, and thinking to myself how wonderful it was that I lived on a block that had a modern Crusader fort that fought for health. So there is, it is not a simple sweeping away of an ugly building with no value. This is a thoughtful effort to echo Catholic values in modern nineteen sixty white brick. And I urge the commission to spend a little more time thinking about the aesthetics, the preservation aspect of it. The second thing quickly that I'd like to say is that the wall itself, the east wall of twelve West Seventeenth Street, is itself a valuable historic artifact. Most of the Ladies Mile is north-south facades. You don't see the windows, you don't see the side walls that were the characteristic architecture of the industrial lofts that occupied this space and that made it the center of the garment trade. Those windows, this is a wall with pristine series of windows that are in exactly the condition that they were when they were used as part of architect, of industrial lofts. They're raised by chains, they move out, they're double hung, and it would be a shame to lose them. If you look closely at the historic district report that accompanied the Ladies Mile in when it was created, this wall is featured when they described twelve West Seventeenth Street. The east wall is simply not an artifact, it's just simply to be ignored. It is one of the unique pictures of what those side walls looked like years ago, and it would be a shame to lose it.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Would you give me just ten more seconds? Because there's a very important issue that hasn't been raised here. And it's a constitutional issue, it's an issue that will bedevil us unless we at least put it on the table.
All right, but very quickly, not even, ten seconds.
For twenty years, for twenty years, my building has spent a small fortune in maintaining that wall. At the behest and command of the Landmarks Commission, you told us it was a valuable artifact, and we were happy to cooperate with you. As the wall became permeable, we used expensive and extremely difficult ways to try to stop the water. As the windows began to leak, we tried desperately to save it. There's an estoppel here. Who is going to compensate us for the years of hardship and money that we have spent as a result of complying with the Landmark Commission's law?
All right.
Well, I'm sorry that you won't let me finish.
I knew that you.
And I appreciate that there is a time. I have submitted a written statement.
Yes, I know, we've received that.
And I hope that you will consider that aspect of the statement.
We will, and we will give it to all the commissioners. Thank you. Franz Prider?
May I have a personal question, everybody? In nineteen seventy-eight, when the U.S. Supreme Court actually weighed in on the power of landmark preservation, they actually made it clear that the power of the landmark is because of the non-discriminatory nature of how landmarks are applied, and for that moment also how they could be taken away. It should be non-discriminatory. We had an application writing in the building nine months ago for fifty-three, fifty-five West Nineteenth Street. It was denied. Okay? It was denied, Landmarks District, similar-sized building, similar-sized building going up, it was denied. And actually, one of the committee members here in this room, and it can be seen on video, said that for the simple fact that a building was given a style designation, they would find it an insult to then go ahead and take that away because it would not only insult the current board, but all prior boards. The application in front of you has been very careful to make sure that they curated all the pictures so that each wall would not be visible. They also made every reference to try to make it sound like this building had no place in the actual designation report, and actually, its inclusion in the designation report is a mistake. We actually went back to the source. We spoke to Marjorie Pearson, who most of you will probably know, she's a person who was the director of research for the landmarks, she also was the editor of the report. She actually has written a letter that will be read into the records a little bit later on, that strongly supports the fact that this building does deserve the need of a style designation. Ladies Mile Historic District is not about preserving fifty or sixty buildings from one particular area. It makes it very clear in the designation report, it is a collection of buildings, it is a diversity of buildings that is being, being looked at. And in your allowing an application to go forward, you are supposed to look not only at the building itself, but also on the context in which it was being presented, and in terms of what is there next to it. We have, as we've seen, we have a beautiful east facade of twelve by seventeen street that will be ripped away, will be destroyed if the building is put up. We have a building that in nineteen sixties was carefully built to not exceed the height of the building that preceded it, as you can see. And we have the only building in the entire Landmarks District, and even the application says it, that was actually a new construction post nineteen sixty. Okay? So what is in front of you is an application to rip the entire neighborhood from its history. Now, why are they asking you to do that? Because they ask you to look at the Catholic Medical Mission Board and say, we need this money for good causes. The reality is, the Catholic Medical Mission Board is an organization that pumps one and a half billion dollars' worth of medicine around the world. Okay? This is not a play for money to give to AIDS, like the gentleman said. It's a very nice statement, it's very effective, the reality is, this is a play for greed, this is a play for, this is a play for.
I'm sorry, your, your time is up.
I understand. This is a play for greed, this is a play for a real estate play.
Okay, thank you.
There's no benefit to the community for allowing this. And I have signatures of people that feel the same way.
Thank you. Zhu Li?
My name is Zhu Li, a longtime resident of Ladies Mile Historical District. I would like to present a testimony against the proposed demolition of ten West Seventeenth Street. Ten West Seventeenth Street simply should not be demolished. Ten seventeen West, ten West Seventeenth Street is one of the very few buildings which have style designation for being representative of nineteen sixty architecture in New York City. In fact, there are so few of them left out of a total of four hundred and twelve buildings in the district. Ten West Seventeenth Street is one of the only two built in nineteen sixties with style designation, preserving part of historical evolution of the neighborhood. The selection is not random. Ten West Seventeenth Street was designed by Mr. Joseph Beaufort, one of the most celebrated architects in the nineteen sixties. His most notable masterwork was the Church of Epiphany, which you saw earlier. The church was called by AIA Guide, quote, "the most positive modernist religion statement on Manhattan Island," unquote. Ten West Seventeenth Street exhibited many of the architect's hallmark characteristics. For example, it has his famous vertical bend of alternating light and recess material in stretcher bonds, and features very long and narrow strip-like windows. In the earlier presentation, the developer wanted you to believe three things. Number one, because ten West Seventeenth Street is not the best example of Mr. Balfatto, hence the building is not worth preserving. However, following that logic, are they telling us lesser work of Van Gogh or Andy Warhol has no value? Number two, the developer wanted us to believe because many other mid-century buildings in the city are slated for demolition, hence it is okay to demolish this one. My reaction is, thank you for letting us know that there are even fewer quality mid-century buildings to preserve. To me, it is more of a reason to not demolish this one, especially the one already has style designation and is built by an architect famous for the mid-century work. Number three, the developer wanted us to believe because ten West Seventeenth Street does not look like the rest of the building in the district, hence it's not contributing. Diversity and evolution are two important factors in the presentation. Just because ten seventeen West, ten West Seventeenth Street don't look like other building, and it's, and also it's representative of the nineteen sixty architecture.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, your time is up.
I respectfully urge each of you, the member of the Landmarks Preservation Committee, to vote against the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Goldwin?
Good day, Chair Schneveson and Commissioners, I'm speaking on behalf of the New York Landmarks Conservancy. Historic district designation celebrates sense of place, architecture, and history. Demolition can be appropriate only when a building truly does not speak to a district's special, unique character. The building at eight dash ten West Seventeenth Street is a vernacular structure from nineteen sixty-three. It is not unattractive, but it does not reflect, quote, "the changing nature of retailing, commerce, and manufacturing, as well as the advances in building technology during the second half of the nineteenth century and first two decades of the twentieth century," unquote, highlighted in the Ladies Mile Designation Report. Therefore, in this case, we believe that demolition is acceptable. If the commission does approve demolition, the permit must be cleared that this decision is limited only to this building and its relationship with this district, and that it does not create a precedent. Designation also allows the commission to guide alterations and new construction so that they can reflect the district. The proposed new building is modest, fitting into the block with the tripartite configuration and masonry cladding in a neutral palette that is contextual for the district. At the cornice, the building aligns with its neighbors, but we believe that the proposed penthouses and bulkhead bring the overall height to a level inappropriate for the block, and ask that they be reduced. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Nelson?
My name is Ryan Nelson, I'm Senior Vice President with Sherwood Equities, co-developer on a project at ten West Seventeenth, Arum Batia. I'm here to read a letter of support from David Fixler, historic preservation expert. I'm going to read a short bio followed by his letter. David Fixler has guided the restoration and renovation of numerous significant landmark facilities for government and higher education clients nationwide. An internationally recognized expert on the modern movement and mid-century modern buildings, he is co-editor of the recently released Ealto and America. David has been published in such magazines as Architecture, Architectural Record, Journal and Society of Architectural Historians, APT Bulletin, and Traditional Buildings. He has lectured and taught at Columbia, University of Pennsylvania, MIT, Wellesley, Wentworth Institute, and the Boston Architectural Center. David has served as a design juror at MIT, Rhode Island School of Design and conceived, helped to organize, and participated in numerous conferences on a wide range of architecture and preservation topics. He is also co-founder and president of Docomomo US, New England, co-chair of the Association for Preservation Technology International, Committee on Modern Heritage, and a past board member of the Society of Architectural Historians. Now for his letter. Dear Commissioners, I am in writing in support of the proposal advanced by Sherwood Equities and Arum Batia Development for the replacement of the present three-story structure at eight to ten West Seventeenth Street. Proposal calls for a new infill building of scale and character that will create a subtle but significant architectural enhancement to the character of this block and district. Designed by Joseph Balfatto in nineteen sixty-three for the Catholic Medical Services, the present ten West Seventeenth Street is a vernacular and modern commercial structure that is neither unique, functionally efficient, nor architecturally distinguished in itself, nor is it representative of the best work of Mr. Balfatto, whose more important works include the nineteen sixty-six Roman Catholic Church of the Epiphany on East Twenty-first Street. There are tremendous pressures on neighborhoods and historic structures throughout New York City today, and one does not lightly sanction the removal of any existing building without evaluating the consequences in demolition, and whether the replacement will improve the character and quality of the streetscape and neighborhood in question. In addition, as someone who has worked for over two decades advocating and executing preservation strategies for modern structures, I am particularly sensitive to looking for quality, even where it might not be readily apparent in any modern resource. With this in mind, I am satisfied that the existing structure at ten West Seventeenth is far from being the highest and best use of a valuable mid-block site within the Ladies Mile Historic District. The proposed development, designed by buyer Blender Bell, provides much neater additional space and a contextual but still contemporary design that, in my mind, markedly improves the quality of the streetscape. The decision of this kind is never easy, however, we should bear in mind that historic preservation at its best is the creative management of change, and we have to acknowledge that at times, change of this kind should be welcomed in the interest of the continued vitality of this historic district. Very truly yours, David Fixler.
Thank you. Anath Patia?
I'd like to read a letter of support of this project from Judith Robinson, who is Principal of Robinson Associates in Washington, DC. Robinson and Associates holds a key position as one of the oldest and most respected in the field of architectural, landscape, and cultural history. Ms. Robinson is recognized as an expert witness before numerous historic preservation review agencies, including the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation, various state historic preservation offices, and the National Capitol Planning Commission. She and her firm have received awards from numerous organizations, including the American Institute of Architects. She is also qualified as an architectural and landscape historian under the professional qualifications of the Secretary of Interior. Dear Commissioner and Chair, as a preservation professional with a strong level of commitment to protecting his. to protecting historic resources, I also believe that it is important to focus a critical eye on how determinations of eligibility are made for historic properties, and on how historic landmark documentation is initially prepared and subsequently interpreted. I've been asked to review and provide comment on the potential landmark characteristics of the property at 10 West 17th Street in the Ladies Mile Historic District. The question is whether the building fits the intent of the New York City Designation Report and displays historic characteristics that the Designation Report should appropriately protect. The Ladies Mile Historic District documentation protects a highly understandable set of properties integrally tied to New York City's fashion industry. This is a clearly recognizable landmark district with a distinctive purpose and a strong sense of historic character. The framework for understanding the significance of the historic district that is laid out in the New York City Designation Report does not seem to provide a basis for considering 10 West 17th Street a contributing building. The building was purpose-built for the Catholic Medical Mission, an organization with no apparent tie to the fashionable shops and stores, loft buildings, and specialty merchants related to the garment industry, or to the distinctive historic character protected by the landmark Designation Report. Its anomaly of purpose is one indication that it is not part of the significance of the district. In addition, completed in 1961 to 1963, and thus falling within the Designation Report's loose period of 1930s to present, its late date of construction does not fit within the primary period of significance of the district, which ended its heyday long before the building's construction. While I believe in protecting distinctive and high-quality buildings in Ladies Mile Historic District, it seems apparent that 10 West 17th does not fit the essential reason the district was determined significant in the first place. The historic intent of the Designation Report is not very well served by diluting it with a non-contributing building that is part of a different dialogue on the evolution of the city. Sincerely yours, Judith Helm Robinson, Principal.
Are there any more speakers? Yes, Christabel.
It's Christabel Goff for the Society for the Architecture of the City. We didn't take a position on this application, but I would just like to quarrel with the use of the word vernacular about this building. Several people have said it's okay to take it down because it's a vernacular building. It is not a vernacular building. Vernacular buildings are not architect-designed buildings, particularly not designed by architects of some note. And as for the last set of comments, I think this commission has the ability to decide which buildings are contributing and which are not, and this is shown as a style building. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Corasani?
I'd like to read two letters on behalf of just the concerned community, one of which is from Marjorie Pearson, who was the former Director of Research of the Landmarks Preservation Commission, and the editor of the Ladies Mile Style Designation Report. Dear Mr. Pradell, you have requested my comments on the building at 8-10 West 17th Street and its relation to the Ladies Mile Historic District. Built in 1961 to 63 for Catholic Medical Mission, the building was designed by Belfato and Pavarini as a small commercial office and warehouse building replacing two mid-19th century row houses. Unlike historic districts listed on the National Register of Historic Places, New York City historic districts are not required to identify a period of significance or list contributing and non-contributing properties. Consequently, the Landmarks Preservation Commission has designated a wide variety of historic districts, many of which encompass large geographic areas, with a diverse range of building types, architectural styles, and dates. In general, it has been the commission's view that such a variety of types, styles, and dates contributes to the understanding of the historic district. Such districts include Brooklyn Heights, Greenwich Village, Soho Cass Iron, and Upper East Side, all of which were designated prior to the Ladies Mile Historic District. While the building at 8-10 West 17th Street is later in date than most of the buildings in the historic district, that does not mean that it does not play a role in the streetscape of West 17th Street and in the historic district. In my judgment, any proposal for demolition would have an adverse effect on the exterior architectural features of the building and its relationship to neighboring buildings. Consequently, a request for a certificate of appropriateness authorizing demolition should be subject to the hardship proceedings that are mandated in the landmarks law. Sincerely yours, Marjorie Pearson. If I have time, I have a second letter here from a regional architect, Stephen Harper. I would like to offer my support to the concerned citizens in the Community Board five designation area regarding the property at 10 West 17th Street. Recently, it was brought to my attention that this commercial structure, designed by the local modernist architecture firm Belfato and Pavarini, is under consideration for demolition, to be replaced by a new residential building which stylistically mimics other larger buildings in the vicinity. As one of the few LPC-designated mid-century modern structures remaining in the historic Ladies Mile District, I am concerned about the devaluation of buildings constructed during this era, both architecturally and with respect to designations previously set forth by the Landmarks Preservation Committee. Commission, I believe Belfato and Pavarini's work, which includes St. Brendan's Church in the Bronx and Church of the Epiphany, should also be considered in the review of this building as part of the firm's work. Like other examples of their work, 10 West 17th Street shows the firm's interest in the translation and expansion of a modernist design ethos into the city's historic fabric. The implementation of masonry construction and punched openings in the building's facade show an earnest variation of local vernacular working within the formal language of mid-century modernism.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
I will submit this for your review.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on the side? All right, there are no speakers. We did receive a Community Board five's recommendation. They recommend approval of this application to demolish a non-contributing building in the Ladies Mile Historic District and the construction of a residential building at 8-10 West 17th Street.
Any questions?
Yes, for the team?
No, for you.
For me?
Or for Mark. Does the... Have we actually regulated the adjacent building's sidewall?
Of course, we regulate all work on landmark structures, whether visible or not. So changes to the visible sidewall would be regulated by us, and our rules and other jurisdiction, other criteria let, you know, require that the work occur within certain boundaries. There's some slight, slightly different standards for secondary facades than there are for primary facades, but there are lots of rules as to how changes to visible side facades must go forward.
And so in this case, would that wall be blocked? The windows be filled? Would there be...
That... The commission... This is considered a staff-level permit when work goes up on one building that affects another's building, secondary, you know, lotline facades. We have never protected lotline windows as a reason for not approving a building that's adjacent to it.
Right, so we protect them in terms of maintaining them.
Correct.
But we don't protect them in terms of maintaining them into the future.
We don't... That's correct. I mean, in other words, we protect... We are regulating their visual appearance, and to ensure that their visual appearance does not detract or is otherwise appropriate to the building, that does not contradict or preclude an approval of a new building coming up next to it that would in fact block those windows.
Remove... That's why I'm asking. Block those windows, or...
Well, it removes them. In other words, it makes them... They get filled in because they're now...
Do they?
Yeah, they're now next to an adjacent building, so they have to be filled in in some...
Code would require...
Yeah.
What dimension? Or...
Just the fire wall that's commensurate with the radiant wall around.
All right, you'd like to respond to some of the comments? Yes, if you can come forward. Carol, do you want to come here?
I think I'm repeating to the largest extent what Mark said, but I just wanted to note that, as he said, that lotline windows are not something that anyone is entitled to. And whether you have them, you have them on borrowed time, whether that's six months or six years or 60 years. And so there's no entitlement to them. If they're seen, if you can see them, then of course, they're regulated by the Landmarks Commission. But I don't know of anything that requires that they be seen. So if they're visible, you regulate them, but there's no requirement that they be seen. So I just wanted to add that to the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
If I can, just again, just to clarify a little bit more on lotline windows. In the history of the site, remember the two, five-story townhouses? The lotline windows actually start above that, so they start from the sixth floor, and they actually set back, so you don't see those from the front. They're barely visible from the street, if at all, because there's two much taller buildings on either side, so it's a very limited view. Lotline windows typically are blocked in, you know, for fire code reasons, to provide the right type of requirement. The Designation Report, which will mandate immediately, for the eastern elevation of the adjoining building, just says that eastern elevation is a brick wall with arched openings, typically how an opening would have been framed with two over two double hung windows. So nothing in the Designation Report talks about anything unique or special or architecturally distinguished. It was an anomaly at the time that this one building was built while the adjoining townhouses were still there, and they took advantage of getting light in, as a modern builder would do now with protected lotline windows, always with the risk that you might lose those if a building has a bright, so go on. I do want to address one other thing, if I might, which is the height issue. I want to stress upon how restrictive this site is, because it is so shallow, and with the zoning requirements to only have... Thanks. With the zoning requirements to limit the mechanical, the new emergency generator requirement, which is fairly new in the building mode, and the cooling tower, you're limited to a very small footprint. And that's why, for the most part, it's not even visible. It's only visible from 17th Street, and only tugged up against the much, much taller building on the corner of Fifth Avenue. So we very, I think, sensitively tried to place the height of this building tugged against the much taller building, so it's never in silhouette against the sky.
Can you tell us, though, what the floor-to-floor heights are of the penthouses and the bulkhead?
Yeah. The typical floors are of 10 foot 8, really actually not very extravagant. The first penthouse floor is 12'0. Floor-to-floor. So again, subtract roughly 10 inches for the flat plate concrete slab, so a little bit over 11. The next one, I think, is 11'4, 11'8 perhaps. And we've done that, and it's a little bit... That plus the mechanical still keeps that under 185 feet, which is the maximum building height. The screened-in cooling tower, emergency generator brings it up to 280 feet. But the floor-to-floors for this type of building are actually shallower, but you might see, they're not 11' or 12'.
Okay. Yes. I'm sorry, we're not taking questions. We're not taking... You... Why don't you... No, I'm sorry. Can you speak to just one of our staff, and they'll relay a topic. All right, I'm sorry, cannot speak from there. Okay. Questions for the applicant? Any questions? Yes, Roberta, you have...
Just in terms of the existing building, can they speak to the fact of materials and textures and whatever? When you described it before, it was a sort of a bland description. So is it actually much... So this is the palette? This is the palette of the existing? No, I'm talking about existing. I'm talking about existing now. I'm just saying that when you described it before, we sort of just...
Yeah, it's really brick, again, the brick infill, the spandrel, the brick piers. These are replacement windows, they're not original. Looks like in 1980, double-laced window replacement. This had been a large garage door. I think it's cement plaster or some type of cementitious material, and then a... This looks like the original aluminum clear-anodized storefront or entrance.
So in effect, the upper stories are, except for the fenestration, replacement of windows are original, and the bottom has had some alteration, the first floor.
And so our description was what in the Designation Report? It was described as what?
Three-story office warehouse building, 45 feet wide and located in the fifth avenue of the block, is based in two colors and two bonds of brick. The first story is dark brick, leading a common bond, is recessed behind three piers of light brick. On the left, there is a metal and glass entrance vestibule. On the right, there are two metal terrace stories. The upper two stories are composed of vertical bands of alternating light and recessed dark bricks and stretcher bonds. The latter contain operable metal, windows framed between two fixed pings. The brick chimney and rooftop structure are visible in these streets.
And just one more question. Do we know why it is that it was that this building by Belfato and Pavarini was only built at three stories? Do we have a history of that? In other words, why did it not go higher? What was the program or...
Stand up, identify yourself.
Sorry. Sorry, I have only been looking at the historic documents that are available with inside of Catholic Medical Mission Board. And this was not built to the same height as the two brownstones that were replaced. They were one story higher. And they were, at the time, it was fit to purpose. There was actually a loading dock in the front where trucks could pull up. There was a conveyor belt that actually took medical supplies up to the second floor where they were repurposed and then repackaged, and then were sent back down to the trucks. That's the area that you see to the right of that building that was repurposed. And it was built, basically, if I understand the situation in which it was built, it was built with limited resources available. We also think it's a bit inaccurate. This is a building that you probably would have seen built in the 1930s. Some of what Kate has shown were much more expressive 1960s architecture. We had a lot of trouble doing any research and finding any work on Belfato.
We did find, through the research, other buildings that he had done, and there were articles about those buildings, this in particular, but there weren't any... There was nothing published in the press about this building when it was built. But we did find articles on these other buildings.
Bear in mind that there's only two or three years apart.
Exactly. And that, if I could... I would say that what's interesting to me about it is that, I keep looking at it, I've seen it and ignored it for a long time, walking the street. What's interesting to me about it is that, let's say, in other examples, we might advocate or want to save the facade. Let's say, you know, even if demolition was a possibility, we would want to save the facade. And in this case, the reason I think that we're not hearing, or I would not propose to save the facade, is because it's not really a facade. And that's the link to this architect's body of work, which means that even though it's very restrained and very shallow, it's actually remarkably sculptural, which is to say, it has about it the volume in a very, in a very reduced form, but comparable to the Catholic Church. Because, and maybe I'm not articulating it well enough yet, but it is more of a whole, this 8-10 West 17th, than one would think. And it's not a surprise that it comes out of this same architect or architectural firm because it is a sensibility. That said, you know, I'm not sure that it should not be demolished in favor of a larger and more productive building, but I do want to say that it does look like something because it comes from someone's style.
I agree. It is architect-designed. But if you look at the photo right above Xavier, which is right around the corner, which has a much stronger expression of materials, textures, and verticality. And for that reason, we think that this is really not a distinctive part of his body of work.
All right. Are there other questions? Any other questions?
Well, I mean, I think that it certainly is not as distinctive as some of the projects that you showed, I mean, some of the photographs that you showed of other buildings by this person and by other people during the same period. At the same time, I couldn't say that, I don't think we could say that this is an ugly building or horrible building. It is a designed facade, I think, and this evidence that it is designed. But I think that the question is, is it something that we must maintain? I guess I don't think that we must. I, I guess I don't think that we must, I think in some cases, we, I feel like we should because architecturally, there's, there is something calling out to it, to us, and, and what we're about to build maybe is the challenge, but I think in this case, we could maybe not, we would not miss it as much because what we, what is being planned, I think, could be considered to be more, in keeping with what the rest of the neighborhood or the block is, but I could not say that we're doing it because it's an ugly building.
Sure, can I make one?
I just want to say one thing about that, that I don't think there's, the, the question really is whether this building is ugly or not. I think that when we've looked at buildings that have come before us that are, are proposed to be demolished, I think people make two arguments, right? So, they look at the building in and of itself, and they see it in the context of the architect, but most, and I think correctly, the first sort of arguments that they laid out was really about this building and whether, what is its role within the historic district? And I think that, I've had the benefit of reading that, the Ladies Mile Historic District Report, I think it's actually something that's very enlightening in terms of what, what, what is the thrust of that district, and it does talk about different waves of development, each telling a part of the story of this district, but when it does come to post sixty-one, it really says nothing. So, there, that wasn't why this district was created. I think, I think that the applicant has actually made a very persuasive argument about why the demolition in this particular case is appropriate, because they've talked through the history of, of, of the, of the Ladies Mile Historic District, and they've also talked about the architecture in and of itself. And I think this picture is very compelling in terms of this architect, and while I respect what you're saying about its volume, but I think that when we're looking at pieces of architecture that we cannot see disappear, I think those are the other examples that we would never want something to happen to, I think this building is, in my mind, it's, it's designed, but it's still fairly plain, and, and I think their proposal to demolish it and create a building will actually enrich the district. So, I think that, I don't think this necessarily sets a precedent, and I'm also very persuaded by the fact that, which is a very rare occasion where many of the advocates have come and actually said the same thing. So, we have the Conservancy, as well as the Historic District Council and the Community Board have noted that.
Well, what precisely is our standard? If, if this was a building that was designated no style, right, we wouldn't be having this discussion, right? It would just go, right? But this one was designated with a particular style, whether we liked the style or we don't, so what, what's our standard? What's the difference?
Well, I think there are a couple of things. One is that the way designation reports were written varied, so this idea of no style, maybe now it's become more acceptable, and in fact, the way we write our reports say what no style is, but I know that Michael has often argued that just because it has a style doesn't mean it's contributing. So, I think very often we find ourselves looking at it on a case by case basis, and some things, some buildings are very evident, we don't even think about it, they're made to be preserved, we're not going to look at it again. We saw this case very recently with the building on West Seventy-Nine Street, which was marked as style, and, but I think the commission felt comfortable with demolishing it. It was adjacent to the Lucerne, which had also side lot line windows, and I think the commission also again recognized that windows are very often blocked off, and we don't have, it's not really our purview to protect these windows. So, that, I think that's a sort of, almost kind of a parallel situation. Yes, Diana?
Yeah, I was just going to say, yes, I, it's not that, that we don't appreciate the style, I would say, it's, it's a question of how it fits in the district, and also, is it, is it an adequate expression of the style that makes it rise to the level that we think it, it really is very necessary to preserve it? And, and this case, I think that the architect did do a nice job with a very, a very utilitarian purpose, and that that kind of restrained the expression that you see in some of his more lively and, I'd say compelling works that are, are more interesting and expressive. And I think, personally, I think that some of the examples of his buildings are well worth preserving, isn't around to ask, I don't believe, but anyway, if, if this is something that would, but I think it's not such a notable example of this architect's work, or of this particular style, that it must be preserved, whereas some of the others I might feel very, very differently about. So, to me, it's about how, you know, the, the excellence and the, of the, of the expression of the particular style of a building, and also how that fits within the district that we're looking at, rather than whether we do or do not prefer, all of us might have different preferences as to our favorite style, but that's not the issue.
I think, because just to sort of embellish a teeny bit, which is, designation reports is what we're looking at, so we're looking at this building in the context of this report, and reports, you know, to a certain extent need, are interpretive, need to be interpreted. And so, I think that what, what the chair was saying, there's obvious buildings that really are what this district was, was, you know, designated to protect, and the designation report talks about those phases of development, and so that's clear, as you move to the, the margins and the edges, I think that's where the commission, recognizing that even buildings that we, that don't contribute to the district may have a style, the commission has the discretion to, to, to look at them and make a, a sort of a, sort of a building by building determination of how, how they contribute. So, so the reports are interpreted to...
Yes, Michael.
And I would, I would, I think that, and I think this conversation that we're having is, is great because it, it's not hewing to these kind of dogmatic points where if it's, if it has one name in the designation report, it's automatically this, and if it has another name, it's automatically that. I think that's not the way that a district should be looked at, and I think the presentation that was made earlier is a perfect example of how to make an argument for the appropriateness or inappropriateness of modifying or removing a building in a district. Now, A, is it distinctive to the district? Argument made, no. B, is it distinctive for the architect who made it? Argument made, no. C, is its diversity in itself, even if it's not a great building or by the best, by the architect exemplary of the district? Argument made, no. I think that, you know, you've addressed the issues that relate to the, you know, it's not a judgment about, was this Belfato's worst building ever? Or is this the worst building from the nineties? No, you know, it's, it's got some aesthetic thoughtfulness, it's not a vernacular, as Christabel said, it is a building designed by an architect, we all have bad days. I think that it's, you know, I think it was a well, well done argument. I think it's, I think it's good conversation, and I once again urge that we should get away from using those kind of automatic designations, I think, if a building has a style, it's not automatically a guarantee of its, of its preservation forever, nor should it be a fatal, you know, thing that if, if it doesn't have a style.
All right, other comments? All right, are there, so are there concerns about the demolition of this building, and then we can just move to the new building? All right, okay. The proposal itself, I think the proposal, I know that there were some questions about the bulkhead and the penthouse, but I think in general, it is, it's, it's a sedate building, we've seen other buildings that are, that are more, you know, they shout out or something more, but it's very much in the vocabulary, at least in my opinion, very much in the vocabulary of, of the high street wall loft buildings of, of the district, and it seems like the palette that they've chosen of colors is, again, in masonry and is very reflective of other buildings in the district. Are, any commissioners have concern?
Well, I mean, I think that, I think that the, the design is completely appropriate, and I will, and I will vote for it, but I think that, for me personally, the projects that I find are more appropriate, and that, that as a commission-er, I would hope to encourage, would be those that don't just follow the, the pattern book, but that try to make some kind of more evident statement about the fact that this building is, is of its time, and yes, this is not, we don't have dental moldings and swags and whatnot, but I think that, I think it's a bit too deferent, and I would urge this very, very capable applicant to, in the future, feel greater latitude in, in making the building speak a little bit more of its own day and not seek to erase itself in the environment.
All right, although some of the, some of the things they talked about in terms of drawing from the old architecture, but doing a modern interpretation, yeah?
But, you know, we, when it's done, it'll be a perfectly appropriate background building, we approved another one of those this morning, and I think that, you know, there's a place for those, and that's, you know, better that than something, you know, else, but I think it's, you know, part of making a district a compelling place. I mean, when you hear, I, I was noting in the, in the recent past, we've heard lots of articles about landmarks, not necessarily in a positive vein, related to recent events or events that didn't come to pass, and I thought that it was interesting that there seemed to be no disagreement from anybody that in landmark districts, the qualities of, the quality of new construction is unquestionably better than in, in non-districts. And I think that part of that is from this commission's holding developers and homeowners to a higher standard of design quality that, you know, that kind of, it carries the conversation forward, it, it makes this guaranteed to be a valuable aesthetic place into the future, and I think that that happens by pushing the envelope a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Are there other comments? Or any other concerns? Anything? Yeah?
Well, you know, I don't know if we have, we saw materials, I guess, I saw a board, but I was just interested in what, I was interested in what the penthouse screen wall looks like as one of the items, and which is...
Do you want to, it's heavy, it's not a fall, but...
So, where is this open screen wall that is the penthouse? Which is that screen wall?
Yeah, it's actually the same brick that's perforated, meaning the same brick out.
That brick is which one?
I mean, it's just on that very last one, Kate, you see, this wall, it's a big brick, and it'll be, the brick slipped out to allow air to come in, it's over there, it's really the same.
It's like a basket weave kind of effect?
Yeah.
Okay, but here is the panel now. Doesn't it say that one?
Is that one? Yeah. Top, bottom, okay.
Is it painted aluminum wall panels?
Yeah.
And that is saying green as the screen wall, that's the same thing?
Yeah, this is brick, this is a panel.
That's right, I got that.
Yeah, and that would, and that would be the...
Where is that?
Yeah, so let's go to the very top.
Right, that proportion, right.
Yeah, this is metal panel here, it's open, open to the sky.
It's open to the sky, so it's not open on the side?
No.
It's open, it's closed on the sides and open to the sky, because it's covering the, what is it, enclosing?
It's a cooling tab, emergency generator, and then stacked on top of it with the cooling tower.
Okay, there are two levels in between that.
Yeah, it's, it's one large open level with a frame that holds the cooling tower above the emergency generator.
So, I still think that that's large, and, and, and I thought it was better when I thought you were saying it was a screen, but it's not a screen, it's just metal panels, it's a wall, I mean, it's going to read like it's a solid wall, I think that that should be looked at.
Yeah, I, I think the point is, though, it's virtually not visible, it is visible, bear with me just one second, not from Seventeenth Street at all, and it's this panel up against the brick wall, blank brick wall of the adjoining building. You know, what we've been very careful about is trying to retain the, this silhouette, and again, you know, as you walk further down sixteen from either direction, you'll not see it.
Is there any way you can, is there ways to bring the height down? Is this the max, this is the minimum that you need?
Yeah, we, we're, by zoning, and we've gone, as you know, we've gone for a zoning review, by zoning, we're restricted, because this is a small site, to only twenty percent.
No, but there are different ways you could have done it, I think, but anyway, I guess my question was, if it, if it could be a screen, which is what I thought you were saying it was before, then...
You mean like a bar, like a bar grill or a mesh or a louver?
Roberta, my project architects just said, one of the reasons we have it solid, actually, is for sound attenuation as well.
Okay.
Okay, therefore, you, you get the airflow at the top for the cooling tower.
All right, are there any other concerns? Roberta, you fine with that?
Yes, I just think that, you know, we don't, we didn't really go through all the materials and details, and sometimes, you know, we spent time looking at how windows function and, and what are the louvers, and what is it that we love that we leave the window, I'm not sure that we understand all of that. I think in general, I know, I understand it as a, as a schematic, but I don't know any need to go more, just in terms of details.
Yes.
I think, I think, I agree, I think it would be better if it had some kind of texture to it, either as a screen or a, I think there, I know there are acoustical louvers, there's ways to do it, I mean, I think they could do that with staff, though.
We, we could ask them to do that, so it's a little more, so lighter and not seen as a solid...
You know, the roof scape is very varied in the district, it has, it's, it's got lots of mechanical stuff on the roof, but I think it has a kind of, this volume, because it's clad in a smooth panel, I think has a more architectural quality and less, less, less of a kind of rooftop, you know, rooftop mechanical stuff quality, and I think that could be handled with staff, that, you know, just give it some more texture, explore some options.
Okay, does that seem fine? All right, so if, if there are no other issues, are we ready to vote? Okay, good, so we can close the hearing? And, Michael, do you want to read it?
Regarding eight to ten West Seventeenth Street in the Ladies Mile Historic District, the application is to demolish a building designed by Belfato and Pavarini, built in nineteen sixty-one through sixty-three, and construct a new building, I recommend approval. Finding that the existing building, built in the latter half of the twentieth century, is not representative of the major development phases of the historic district, and its low wide proportions are anomalous in the mid-blocks of the historic district. That the existing building is not representative of the typology of other mid-twentieth century buildings within the historic district, nor is it a significant example of a modern style building. That the plane of the front facade of the proposed new building will align with the facades of the adjacent properties, thereby reinforcing the street wall, a significant consistent feature of the Ladies Mile Historic District. That the front facade utilizes the vocabulary of base shaft and capital, recalling the typical facade composition of early twentieth century commercial buildings located throughout the historic district. That the height of the cornice line and general massing of the proposed building will be in keeping with the height and massing of buildings found in this historic district. The floor to ceiling heights will approximate the scale at neighboring properties, helping to maintain a harmonious relationship with neighboring buildings. That prominent aspects of the design, which will be perceived within the context of the streetscape, including the modular organization of the facades, the proportional relationship of solid to void, the depth of infill, and the materials palette will be consistent with such elements at buildings throughout the streetscape, thereby helping this building to be well-integrated with the surrounding context. The depth of the infill, profiles of the metalwork, and joint size and pattern of the terracotta rain screen will maintain a level of articulation in keeping with the level of ornamentation of many loft buildings in this historic district, helping to build, helping the building to harmonize with its context and not drawing undue attention to the building. Now, the horizontal groupings of the windows, the wider center bays, the narrower side bays, the change in materials in proportion between the base and upper floors will be consistent with the typical organization of facade elements at tall, narrow loft buildings within this historic district. That although a three-story base is atypical for this historic district, the heightened organization of the base, featuring recessed spandrels between the first and second floors, will be compatible with the proportions and size of two-story bases within the streetscape. That, except for the limited oblique views, the penthouse bulkheads and screen will not be visible in conjunction with the front facade of the building from any public thoroughfares. That these roof...
That these rooftop accretions will only be visible in connection with the rear facade in the context of a taller building. That the rear of the building, visible from West Sixteenth Street, will be simple in design, well-scaled to the context in which it is seen, thereby maintaining a subordinate role within the streetscape. That the placement size and simple design of the rear balconies will recall the fire escapes present on adjacent buildings, helping to integrate the building with its surrounding context. That the penthouse and bulkheads will be clad with brickwork to match their facade and the blocky silhouette will harmonize with the surrounding roof scape, roofscapes. And that the mechanical screen will be simple in design and in keeping with typical rooftop accretions throughout this historic district in terms of its material finish and placement. And the staff will work with the applicant on refining the selection of those materials.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, this application's been approved.